Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of January 16, 2019. As always, I'd like to remind everyone in the audience and everyone at the table that we're broadcasting this live. We are also recording it for use at a later date, so keep that in mind. I'm going to take a few things out of order as we go along just to save some people's time that are in the audience, so be patient with me, please. I'd ask you to also join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. You join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Dates to remember. January 21st, we'll have no school. It's Martin Luther King Day. January 25th is early release, pre-K to 12. It's grading day. February 6th, which is our next school committee meeting, will be our annual budget presentation, which will be a public hearing. I was also asked, Alyssa asked me if I would remind everyone about the polar plunge. It's Sunday, January 27th. It's coming right up. I understand that Mr. Small volunteered Mr. Boyce, and Mr. Boyce was a little reluctant, but after he rethought it, Mr. Boyce is now taking the polar plunge.
Absolutely. And I'm bringing one of my nieces with me. She's more than happy. But we are going to have Mr. Small sponsor us, seeing that there is money, and he was very forward in making sure that I was the one participating. So that's two of us, at 35 each. Thank you very much for supporting the Indian Head School.
That's good.
Seeing that I've already given Mr. Hayes some money, I might have asked for that back.
But Fred, Fred, now, sometimes when you open your mouth, insert your foot. This may be one of those times. Two to two and a $70.
Yeah, he's got 100. He's 50 bucks each.
All right. Also, on the day of the polar plunge, there is a pizza bowl at noon time here at the high school, which is another fundraiser. So keep those things in mind as we move forward through the month of January. An entertaining motion to accept the minutes of December 12th.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? An also entertaining motion to approve the minutes of December 19th, joint meeting with the Whitman Finance Committee.
Some of.
Discussion. All those in favor? Yes, thank you. Okay. We need to, as you saw on the later day today, the reason it didn't make it onto the original agenda that was sent.
Mike's not here yet. Mike's not here yet.
Okay, that's going to wait a few minutes. We're waiting for Mike McHugh. He is the voting member. It's to ratify Unit B. And the reason it wasn't in the packet, they just voted on it last night. So we put it on as an annor. Okay. Dan Sullivan is here, and he is here to give us an auditor's report for 2018. Dan represents, I believe it's CLA?
Yes, CLA, Clifton, Lawson, Allen.
And they're an outside. Dan, would you just briefly, just for the people that may be watching, explain to them what the audit is, why it's necessary, where you come from, what we do? Because quoting several people on Facebook, so to speak, we should have somebody audit, we should have somebody do this. Well, you're here to tell us that we do that, and you're an outside firm.
So the reason, there's a couple of reasons why you end up having an audit of your financial statements, and it's called a single audit, which encompasses a number of things. It's, will cover your actual financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and we'll audit in compliance with generally accepted auditing standards. But it also includes a single audit, which we have to, by the GAO, because you receive about $2 million worth of federal awards during the year, and expend those. You have to have a compliance audit on those grants, and also a review of your internal controls over your financial reporting. So it's called a single audit. The other reason why you also have an audit is because you actually have bonds that you've issued to build schools, build schools, equipment, buy equipment. And based on those covenants, you actually have to have an annual audit of your financial statements so that it can be reviewed and you can actually receive a bond rating. Those are the two main reasons why we get, and you have to have an independent certified public accounting firm do these audits. That's the only options you have, and so therefore you end up hiring our firm, Clifton, Lawson, Allen, to come in on an annual basis and do this. We have to make certain amounts, you know, we have strict standards in our independence, and we actually have to follow generally accepted auditing standards, which is governed by the Institute of CPAs in the United States of America, and we have to follow that, including some other government standards. So there's a whole bunch of things that we have to follow. It's not like a CPA firm can do, one firm can do it one way, another firm can do it another way. You're getting something so that when your audit is done, and someone wanted to look at a school district out in California, and a school district here in Massachusetts, it would be the exact same standards being used in both areas.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sullivan before he gives us his report? Fred?
And your report encompasses not only the accounting end of things, but also the procedures?
Yep. We're limited, though. We look at the procedures in order to make sure that the numbers that end up on your financial statements are being prepared correctly. So we use it in that context. So, for example, we'll look at your bank reconciliation process. We'll look at your warrant process. We do a whole set of looking at all your internal controls. So, for example, you'll have internal controls related to how you do your purchasing, and you pay your bills, how you book your cash receipts, how you make sure that your money is protected. And yes, we look at, we have to go through all those processes to make sure that the end result, that the information reported on your financial statements is accurate.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
So a quick engagement summary. One of the big things that happened this year for your financial statements, the implementation of Governmental Accounting Standards Board 75, which was the, a more fully, full recognition of your other post-employment benefits, which is your health insurance that you pay to your retirees. And that required a restatement of your beginning balances in your statement of net position. And that was about $59 million because in the past, we only were going back to 2012, and recording like a liability last year was 26 million. Now it's up to 88 million for your OPEB because we're recognizing 100% of what you have not funded, and actuarially is calculated that you should have. The other thing is, we started, we do a lot of our field work, preliminary field work in June before your year end. That's when we look at most of all your internal controls. We look at a lot of your grants, and we did that in June. And then we do our primary field work in November, which will then include most of the substantive work to make sure your cash balances are reported correctly, your revenues and expenses are reported in compliance with GAAP, and all those different things. During the whole process, both in our preliminary and our primary field work, management and staff were responsive to all our inquiries. We had no disagreements with management related to the way things are reported on your financial statements or otherwise. And so therefore, the end result was a smooth audit process. A couple of highlights on this year's audit is that in your, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, in your statement of net position, which is your financial statements based on a full accrual, so that includes all your fixed assets, all your debt, all your different liabilities related to your pension, your unfunded pension, and your other post-employment benefits. You had a net investment in capital assets of $56.2 million. That's about a $1.2 million decrease from the year before. You added about $1.1 million in fixed assets in, you know, doing different things. But we have a lot of newer buildings, and so you have about $2 million, $2.9 million of depreciation. So because you did so much work before, you will start seeing that decrease before you end up even having to come close to start adding quite a bit more on. So there's nothing to be concerned about. You have some restricted net position of about $1.1 million, and that's all the monies that are in your special revenue funds, your capital project funds. And then you have an unrestricted deficit of $97.6 million. The bulk of that all being made up of your unfunded OPEB and the retirement system. And the retirement system, you're on a funding schedule for that. That's the one with Plymouth County. You're on a funding schedule, I think in 2036, that should be completely paid up, and so that liability will go away. And you'll be funding it currently. On your governmental funds, the focus is on major funds and non-major funds. Your general fund will always be a major fund. We have two others that we're showing this year as the circuit breaker. That always reaches the level of the amount of expenditures that go through that to be a major fund. And then there's, there was a technology fund that we had related to Hanson. That probably will drop off next year as a major fund because it won't meet the criteria of being large enough to show. It will get grouped in with all the other non-major funds. So you had four columns. You had the three major, and then one non-major. The general fund, obviously, being the one that we focus mostly on. Total fund balance is about $1.5 million with about $995,000 of being unassigned, roughly equals what your E and D was for certified for fiscal year 18. There's some things different, a little bit differently classified for your financial statements, but nothing material. That's a little bit decreased from the year before. Your unassigned fund balance was about 1.9% last year, and it's about 1.75% this year. So, and I think, you know, you're experiencing it, your budgets are tight, you budget as much revenue as you can, but, you know, things, you know, the decreases are slight, but they're there. You're not like picking up great gains, and you probably won't. I mean, your budget pretty much close to what you need. When you're looking at your budget to actual, that's another statement within here, you had a budgetary, budget to actual of like about $393,000 to the positive. Some of that was, 312 of that was for revenues that you collected, that you, that were greater than what were planned. And you turned about $81,000 back in expenditures, which is a very modest amount when you're budgeting for a whole year to have that percent, small percent, turned back. The other things to look at is your long-term debt footnote, and that's something that the rating agencies always look at. You have debt service of $808,000. That's both principal and interest, and that's just 1.4% of your total overall budget. So that's fairly low. You had $5.4 million still on the books for debt at the end of June of 2018. A decrease of $615,000 was what you paid, and no new debt was issued during fiscal year 18. The other thing is that, you know, the big thing that, you know, everybody's talking about this year is the OPEB. So you have an $88 million unfunded other post-employment benefit liability on your books this year. And you do have your OPEB trust fund. And you do have your OPEB trust fund, but you're, you know, we're funding that fairly small each year, but you put that into a trust fund. So whatever you have in there, and I think it was about $111,000 in there at the end of, which is nothing compared to the 88 million that you have for liability. But that's actually in a non-revocable trust fund. So anything you put in there will go against the OPEB liability. Right now, the discount rate is low at 3.5 because we don't have much to go against that liability. If for some reason you were able to fund it at a larger, higher rate, that could go up to almost like 7%, which would, you know, reduce that liability. But again, it's an accounting thing right now, nothing that you really can, and you're in the same boat with everybody else. It's not being funded and there's no mandatory, not like the retirement system, which you are funding all your past costs and they will all be funded by 2036. This is not, there is no requirement for this. The other reports to talk about is the GAO and the OMB reports. That's your single audit and that's your federal. We have two reports. One is on your internal controls. We have to look at your internal controls and we have to report if we see any significant deficiencies in your internal controls, which could put those federal funds in any kind of jeopardy. You have a clean report on that. There was no significant deficiencies. In fact, your controls are good, really good. And then we have to then look at your grants and look at, for every grant you get, there is a pretty decent size list of things, ways that you have to spend that, certain procedures you have to go through, including like when you can draw down the money, what you can spend it on. We have to look at at least 50% of the $2 million that you had in grants and tell the federal government if you're spending it within their compliance. And that's a clean report too. And that's consistent with what we've been seeing in the last couple of years for Whitman Hanson. And then the last report that we give you is a governance letter, which is our letter to you, to those in charge of governance, to the school committee members, telling you if we had any problems with the audit, if we're finding any significant deficiencies in internal controls, if there was any misstatements in the records that was given to us, if we had any audit difficulties. And we can report in that letter to you, and we did, that, you know, we didn't find any misstatements. All the information in the financial records were presented fairly, were presented in compliance with what we needed to do to prepare the financial statements. And I think that's my report.
So there's no changes needed? We got a nice clean report is what you're calling us, a layman's turn?
Yep. And then, and just to even talk about, we also do the audit of your end of year report that you submit to the, and consistently you report everything correctly in accordance, which is different than the financial statements combinations. You report that and we don't typically have any findings on that. We haven't finished doing the one, we're just starting to do the one for the year ended in 18, but in 17, that was also a clean report. And you, you know, you file your, all your compliance reports with the Department of Revenue, you know, early in the year, get your E and D certified, that came out clean. So we look at that too. So in all respects, I think, because we're able to have a timely audit, that can't happen unless you have internal controls that are working month by month, week by week during the year. You can't close your books if you don't have that kind of procedures going on.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Boyce?
Thank you very much for that report. Much appreciated. With the current government shutdown, are you going to see in next year at this time, you reporting to us any money we get federally impacting any pieces of us high, for lack of a better word?
I think most of, all the monies you're getting is related to education and that is, I would think, one part that's affecting it. I think you're still getting all your monies. And it's being filtered through the state. So I think, I don't think there'll be any impact related to your special revenue funds and your grants.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean. Could be something reporting differently next year.
But there's nothing, no indication right now.
Okay.
Anyone else? Dan, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Mike's here.
Okay. Mike? McHugh? As I told you, we're going to bounce around a little bit. Hi, Mike, how are you? Come on up. We need to vote on acceptance of Unit B's memorandum of agreement. I would entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Trotta?
I'd like to say that it was a very collegial meeting. I think we were very, I think it was a well-fought-out contract. Both groups worked well together and I think it came out to be a very successful contract. I would recommend it highly.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes, do we know an overall dollar impact?
An overall dollar impact?
Yeah.
As far as salaries?
No, I mean, as far as going into, I know this is going into something that we're already currently in, going into the rest, well, next six months, the rest of this year. Is it like hundreds of thousands that we're looking at?
No, not at all. In fact, there was some restructuring of some positions, administrative positions, that we might see some changes in how we do business as far as curriculum, servicing the students the same way we have been, but shifting up some of the positions that we have that can actually, and to put it bluntly, we have the same revenue bait or the same dollar amount going out, but we're restructuring how we use those funds in this contract.
Excellent.
So to speak, in this contract, we've removed the curriculum coordinators from K to 12. They will be now six through 12, but taking some of their salaries, we're putting in a K to six, or a pre-K to five elementary curriculum coordinator. Okay? So we restructured some of that. We restructured some of the assistant principal salaries to keep them up with current salaries. But I think the association and us, we mutually agreed that this contract is good for all of us. So the impact, financial impact, isn't overarching. Nobody's getting exorbitant raises. It's fair and consistent with our neighboring communities.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions before I move to the vote? Kevin?
Oh, no, I'm just going to answer if any questions came up. If I do have a chance to comment, certainly echo what Mr. Trotta said. This has been somewhat of a long process, longer than we wanted to, but do appreciate the efforts, creative efforts in working together to get this done. And before you know it, we'll have to do this again soon, but no, happy with the agreement and certainly thank the committee and the committee that I work with, Beth Stafford, Mark Stefanski, Chris Ahern, to get this done in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Anyone else before I move to the vote?
I'm sorry, I missed the motion in the second. Who motioned in second?
I'm sorry, Michelle.
Motioned in.
I did.
Motioned.
The motion in the second?
Yep.
All those in favor? Any unanimous?
I'm abstaining, just after abstaining this cycle.
All those opposed? And one abstention?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, I was asked if I would do, Mr. Larry, do you think the treasurer's report's going to be lengthy? Okay?
Good answer.
Because I did promise the selectmen, they're busy tonight too, and they wanted me to get to the budget as quick as I could.
I'm just going to echo what Dan mentioned and highlight a couple of things. He mentioned the debt position of the district. That actually is down because he went through June 30th. It's down to $4,785. You have a short-term note of $245,000. You look at other districts in the area, your debt position is, in my opinion, fantastic because you've got very little debt for a district this size. And throughout that process, you've maintained your AA bond rating. And one of the other things I wanted to point out was that the investment income for 2018 was estimated to be $30,000. It actually came in at $85,589. So the difference between those two actually kicks out to E and D. And it's, I mean, if you think about it, it's a couple of power professionals, it's a teaching position. This year, we estimated $50,000. Through six months, we're at $51,589 with six months to go. So we're already over what we estimated to be the revenue for fiscal '19. And then I would also just mention very briefly that we have a couple of scholarships that are under our custodial care. Last year, I mentioned, we put them into a new investment vehicle. Last year's total investment income was $2,426. The first six months of this year, we're at $3,427. We're up 41% year over year. So we're in very good shape cash-wise and that's it.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Larry? Fred?
The positions that you're quoting, as of what date are those? As we know, the market's...
That's as of December 31st.
December 31st.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine, I know that Kate is here to give us a little quick update on OPEB.
Hi, my name's Kate Canny. I am, I work with Pars. We are the administrator of your OPEB trust program. You are participating in the Plymouth County OPEB trust program. Just for background, you adopted that program in September of 2016 is when you began to fund with an initial contribution of $100,000. Your total contributions to date have been $175,000. Your fees all in, so these are the total fees that you've paid to participate in the program, have been $650.55. So in that full two-plus years, that's all you've accrued in expenses. Your earnings for that time period have been $22,477.59, bringing you to a total for your OPEB trust as of November 30th of $196,827.4. And then just to give you a sense of how the portfolio is doing, and this is at November 30th, I don't have the December 31st numbers yet. We're still calculating those because it's a full portfolio. The three-year rate of return, we had a benchmark set at 7.24%. The portfolio produced a rate of return of 8.43%. Our two-year return, our benchmark, was 8.87%. We produced a rate of return of 11%. And then last year, the benchmark, because of the volatility of the market, was at negative 1.4%. That was the benchmark. Our portfolio was down negative .41%. So those are the portfolio returns.
Good job.
Any questions?
Anyone have any question? Chris?
Can you just generally speak to what the investment mix is of the portfolio itself?
The investment mix is, you have, you're in a growth portfolio. So currently, the investment is about 75% equity and about 23% fixed income. And then we have cash holding.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jamon? Can we take the food pantry people out of?
Sure.
They don't have to maybe sit through?
The next up, food pantry presentation?
Let's get them home.
And I promised them we'll go right to the budget.
Yeah, we can.
Hi, I'm Ellen Galambos. I'm the advisor of the National Honor Society. This is Bruce Perry and Lauren Kelly there from the Whitman Food Pantry. This is Katie Molito. She's president of the National Honor Society. And behind me is Sue Schwade and Christine Cameron from the Hanson Food Pantry. And we're very pleased to announce that we raised $5,000 at the Miles for Meals 5K in the fall. And we'd like to present a check of $2,500 to both the Whitman and Hanson Food Pantries.
If I could just say a few words, the volunteers of Ellen, Mrs. Galambos and the National Honor Society and the girls and the guys have been doing this for quite a few years now. And it started with, I think they either made, it was either $500 or $1,000 the first year, and now it's up to $5,000 between the two pantries. And they do a tremendous job. They do 99.9% of the work. You know, our favorite part of coming to this meeting is getting this check. So we really appreciate it, so. But they do a great job and, you know, we met them in September or October at a meeting and they're just phenomenal kids. And we just can't say enough about what they do for the food pantry and for the community as well. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We should be so proud of the kids in the school system because we've had so many kids come through and help us rake and pack and unpack and collect donations and raise funds through their fundraisers. We should be really proud of these kids because these are our future.
Thank you. Superintendent's going to give us a budget update and we'll have a brief discussion. We have some members here from, Mr. Lyman's here from Whitman, Mr. Bezanson from the Board of Select, Mr. Kowalski. We have some finance committee members here, I know, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. First, before we go, Mr. Boyce hit on it a little bit, but we are in the midst of a government shutdown. And if people know families out there that have school-aged kids that mom or dad might not be working or are furloughed, please contact your principal. Our principals have been reaching out, seeing what we can do, but we might, they might go unnoticed. Not everybody knows what mom or dad does for a living, but we are looking at our own communities to make sure that if anybody is on furlough because of the shutdown, we'll take care of the children in school and modify if things come up as far as, you know, book fares or little things like that. Those are the incidentals that I'm afraid that will pop up over time. We can feed them, but hey, mom, I need 10 bucks to go to this or whatever. We will look at that to make sure that they're not missing out because of the shutdown. Over the past month, I appreciated having a conversation with Whitman FinCom right after our meeting and telling them where we're at and some of our projections of expenses and our FY '20 budget. I got some feedback from Whitman FinCom and I'll address some of those questions that they had for us today. I have some answers from Mr. Howard, which he asked about last meeting. I appreciated a meeting with Mr. Lyman and with Mr. McHugh to find out where the towns are at. We had a conversation about budget. Nothing's been solidified as we know our revenues aren't there. But we do have some budget projections, as I put out before, and some answers to some of those questions that we had. So I'd like to just start out with our unfunded and underfunded mandates from the state. Kind of had an idea of what some of them were and you all, and school committee members have a little chart of what the underfunded and unfunded mandates are. But when I looked at it, I kind of did an oh-my-greatness moment of some of the things that we think we do on the course of doing business over the course of the day are actually mandates that have an impact on our school budget. So I'll go down a little bit line by line of where we're at. Our sped tuition costs only were underfunded over $2 million. Our circuit breaker eligible sped costs were underfunded by $370,000. Our sped transportation, and this is all FY '18 because we don't know numbers now. Our sped transportation costs are underfunded by $897,000. Our mandated transportation costs for our district were underfunded by $300,000. Our homeless transportation costs are underfunded by $26,000. We have to provide ELL services for our students, the cost of two teachers, at $159,000. Our school choice payments are $65,000. Our charter school payments are underfunded by $475,000. We have to provide PD for our staff so that they can be relicensed. That's a state mandate. Over $90,000 is what we put aside for professional development for licensure. Our state reporting, which is our SIMs and our EPIMS data, we have to report to the state all of our information. It's a salary position of $80,000. Our auditing service, which you just heard about, is about $34,000. What we have to spend for our students that we have to service who are either removed from school because of behavior or social, emotional, or... from school because of behavior or social, emotional, or where they're, used to be what you call expelled, we cannot really expel any students anymore. It's kind of short, but it's about 12-1. We have to CPI, we have to restrain, train our teachers, and we have to provide training for pre-K to 12 to make sure that they adequately know how to restrain a child. This year's cost was about 12-5. That fluctuates because it's a two-year cycle for retraining, for recertification. Initial certifications are more expensive than recertifications. And we have to provide pre-K, which is something I didn't realize, but we have to provide pre-K. And we're underfunded in pre-K by $488,000. So, our actual costs in FY '18 of mandated expenditures is $8,131,000. Our anticipated reimbursement is $2.1 million, leaving us an underfunded expense of over $5 million. So, that's the first number that I wanted to give to this committee, that this is what we're held to. So, when we're talking increases in costs, this is what the state determines we need to do as a district. Now, George and I talked about educator evaluation, which is $7,500. It's for our baseline edge. We assumed back in the day, we used to evaluate our teachers and it was scripted, and we just put it in their file. Now, the state wants us to make sure we generate evidence and give them that data. We have to have a software program for that. We're not including time in educator evaluation. Our time for our administrators is doubled, if not tripled, what it was 10 years ago because of educator evaluation. Now, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but it's something that we mandated, we have to do to make sure we hit state guidelines. ELL services, not a bad thing for our students. However, it's a mandate. And it's something that, as our ELL population grows, we might have to provide more teachers for that. We doubled our teachers. We had one, one teacher and tutor last year. We now have two teachers. And by our numbers, we should have two teachers and a tutor, if not three teachers, for next So, those are our unfunded mandates or our, our underfunded costs that go out. Our health insurance increases are up 5%, give or take a little bit. Nothing's been set yet, but it's 5%. Christine budgeted 5% for insurance increases next year. In our FinCom discussions with, with Whitman and with the town administrator from Hanson, they did already talk about full-day K and where we are going with full-day K. So, that's something that we're not bringing up as a budget issue this year, but it's something that we want to look forward into the future. One of the items that Whitman FinCom asked, because we are putting revenue or expenditures out for charter schools, is the full-day kindergarten process. When are we going to start to look at keeping our kids here? That's a piece that I said this board has looked at over, over time to make sure that we can adequately put full-day K in. But it is a talking point in Whitman. It actually was brought up at a, at a budget meeting. We were just upstairs, and I spoke with Mike McHugh about it just the other day. When I talked about the budget increases last, last school committee meeting, we didn't include any revenues. And the Whitman FinCom asked myself to put together a impact statement on what a level funded budget would be for our school district. I talked about a $2.9 million increase in, in, in costs already. It would be $3.7 million in deficits if we were level funded across the board. So, we included no revenues, nothing from the state. Everything would be flatlined. We'd look at $3.7 million of a deficit if we were flatlined from 18 or from 19 to 20. That's the year I'm in. So, an impact of that, as this board thinks about $3.7 million or even $2.9 million, what would the impact be? The impact would be in our service delivery. In 2008, 2009, 2010, we had some severe budget cuts in the district. We have not yet fully recovered from those cuts. If we went back to square zero, you look at a 10-year process to get back to where we were. So, the impact is service delivery, is product, is where we go. What do we do? It's people. I'm not going to put a dollar or number or a number on folks. It's program. It's everything that we've done the right way over the past five years would go back to square one. And I, I fully understand where Whitman is coming from, and I'm willing to work with the Whitman FinCom and the Whitman Selectmen and folks on that. But the impact of just that number of 2.9 million or 3.7, as George and I were doing it on the board, you devastate your district if you were to level fund across the board. So, that impact statement is such. I can't do what police fire, DPW do and put a, a number on that. It's January as well. We have great teachers right now, and I would be remiss and I would be, I would not be doing my job if I were to say, I'm starting to cut the budget in January before I present the budget to you folks. My job is to present a budget that will adequately move our district as slimly forward as we can because we've been leveled for a while, maintaining the best possible product from pre-K to 22 for the students of Whitman and Hanson. So, I'm telling you this, a deficit or a level fund would impact us severely. I don't know what program. I'm not going to put that. If, we need to do that. When you set your assessment, your job is to tell me what you can fund, and then I will then, with George and my team, make those, those things happen. I can't come up with that right now, but I will just say the deficit of a, of a 2.9 or a $3.7 million impact to this district of, of a budget projection of 53 million plus would put us back to way back when. We've made some serious gains as we've moved forward, but we're not asking for anything extra this year. As, as we've talked about the unit P contract, we've already reshuffled some of the funds so we can adequately service our kids in the most efficient, effective way possible. So, that impact statement, I know that's not exactly what the FinCom had wanted, but I'm telling this board, if you want me to dig deeper into February, into the first meeting in February, into the second meeting, I can absolutely do that. But I haven't presented our budget yet. And looking at my position as the chief advocate for all of our kids, I want to make sure I'm presenting the budget of what we think we need moving forward within reason and accountability. So, that's where we're at right now as far, as far as budget. The other pieces in Whitman, they asked me to talk about or really research transportation and if we invested in our own company or leased our own buses. That's going to be a year-long project. That's not something I can put together within a year to even make sure that it's efficient, but it's something that, that we'll absolutely look at. The full-day K piece was, was a piece of the conversation as well as making sure that there was equity between the two towns. And those are numbers that we will come up with as we go forward in special education. I will just say our special education costs are, as you see the unfunded piece, there are probably two kids going out of district this week just because of behaviors that are not acceptable in our school and are affecting the classrooms that those students are involved in. So, those costs are, are something that I can't project. I can't see where we are, and that's that unfunded piece going back and forth. So, the best job that I can do with, with the budget here is telling you where our unfunded mandates are, what we are doing right now internally to put together the best budget we can within the means that we have, understanding the means we have, but looking for the services that we want, we need to provide for the students entering school in 2000, in September or August of 2019. I think the former superintendent said school's going to open in September. We have to make those cuts and those hard decisions, but once this committee gives us direction, gives me direction, on where you want to go. So, that's the budget update that I have. I don't have any great news, nothing. We haven't talked about grants. George just got some information on Title I. I hope he's incorrect because that might be fluctuating. There's a lot of stuff coming from the Fed that's all over the map right now. As far as any impact to our budget right now because of the Fed's shutdown, it hasn't. Food services are really the area, and we're okay right now, at least for the time being. In February, if there's a change, I'll come back to you with some more information about the change.
Mike?
I have a question. On the state mandate, go down to school choice.
Yep.
That's a state mandate?
So, by law, we can't tell a student they can't go somewhere else. So, so if a student in any grade says, I'm, I'm going to second grade at East Bridgewater, we sign them out, we pay a $5,000 fee. Now, on the flip side, we have students coming in here. So, that's not revenue reimbursement from the state, it's reimbursement by, by the towns. So, our high school has approximately 55 school choice kids here. But the mandate going out, we don't get any reimbursement from the state for our kids going out.
But from their district, we do.
Only if they're here. So, our students that go to any, again, any school, if a student comes up to me and says, I want to sign out, I got accepted to West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School, I'm going, we get zero money from them. Now, if West Bridgewater sends a student here, it'll be a wash. So, but yeah, it's a, there is no, no, we cannot deny a student the right to go to another school that accepts them as school choice. Same thing as charter. We cannot deny that student a charter. If they're accepted, we pay their, their tuition. Same thing as, as a vocational school. We cannot deny them that right. Now, vocational doesn't come out of this budget, it comes out of the towns, but we can't deny a student if they want to go to school choice. We don't have to participate in school choice for that. We participate in school choice as a community so we can bring kids in. But the exterior going out is, is a, we, we have no choice in that.
Thank you.
Before I take any other questions, just to tailor in what Jeff said, when we met with Whitman Finance Committee, one of the questions from one of the members to us was, we're asking other departments to do 3% and 6%. What makes you different? And as you just heard what Jeff said, we have an $8 million state mandate that no other department in the town has with $5 million of it not being funded. That is a giant piece of a budget that other departments don't have. So, it's, the point that I'm making is when departments start to get pitted against each other, and I hate to use that term, we run much differently. We provide a different service, was the answer that I told the finance committee members, than other departments. So, it's very difficult to compare, you know, all departments have their own services they provide, but we are the only department, I believe, that has an $8 million state mandate with $5 million of it unfunded.
And this information on the mandates came from MASC. It came right from their website, and then Christine plugged the numbers and correlated to us. We don't have this year, obviously, at the end of this year, everything that you have here is, is cost from 2018.
Fred?
A couple of things. And to piggyback on what Bob was just saying, just so when we discussed it upstairs a little bit ago, health insurance, for instance, when the town does their budget, they budget for health insurance. So, if a department is looking for an increase, health insurance isn't affected. Our health insurance is part of our budget and part of our increase. And what is it, a little over $8 million bucks a year, our premiums?
No, it's about $5.
$5? Okay. Thought it was higher. So, you know, proportionately, we have that to, to go at. But I think in speaking with the town, what we're, the path we're probably looking at is needing to have an impact statement and have the FinCom have an idea as well as the Selectmen as to what the impact would be should there be no additional monies for us other than what we have last year or a reduction in monies. And to have that so we know what it would be if that did not happen. And I believe we'll set an assessment predicated upon, you know, some sort of an override that the towns will be doing, well, the town of Whitman anyways, and then proceeding from there. So, I think that's where they're looking for that impact. And I know myself just want to provide them with every tool possible, you know, for them. But, I mean, I don't see myself advocating for any less services than the meager services that we already provide.
Well, in order to do that, as, as Jeff said, and I, I think we're all on the same page, it's incumbent upon Jeff to bring to this committee what it's going to take to run this district, and that's incumbent upon us to come up with the figure. And that's what's going to happen February 6th when the budget is presented. And then, we will determine, and then, what you're saying, Fred, we'll give them a better idea of what that cut will be. But without a total budget yet and knowing where we're at, it's pretty difficult to determine what the cuts would be and where we're going to come up. So, within the next couple of weeks, you'll be seeing that at the February 6th meeting. Any, Dan, I'm sorry?
Jeff, under the sped tuition, is that pupils being out of the district now? Do we lost students too? We couldn't, you know, support the services and we put more kids out this year?
We do. And that's been on the increase. And with George as, as assistant, he used to have a program in the middle school that we ended up phasing out once that teacher retired. So, you know, five years ago, six years ago, okay, we had a program in place for, for some of these students. That teacher retires, we have to cut, boom, and all of a sudden, that trickles up and our audit districts go up.
Will this be part of that, like our discussions in the past, trying to get...
Those back. So, the, the goal for us, and Lauren Matheson, our interim director of Special Education and People Services, already has a plan in place, working with Whitman Middle School to, or not, excuse me, Hanson Middle School, to put a language-based program in. And actually, in, in, to her credit, she's worked with our, our attorney to work with a family to make sure we put that in. Otherwise, that person might be out of district. Our people, as I said to this committee, our, our students want to stay home. They don't want to go out. We can't provide certain services. If we spend some dollars and it's a teacher and a paraprofessional, we're really restructuring how we do things, we might be able to keep kids in district. And also, the goal for us is to also tuition in from towns like East Bridgewater, Pembroke, and Abington, who are smaller and might not have those programs for those kids.
Okay. And then, with, with that, you know, hopefully keeping them in, it won't help this next budget because it's going to take at least a year to try to implement getting us back...
Absolutely.
...everything we keep losing.
And, and as I said to the committee before, and I said to Whitman FinCom, and I said this to Mr. McHugh yesterday, if we do end up getting the, the no-cost kindergarten, I think over time, you will see our charter school kids stay home. I think it's, you're not going to see it the first year, but you will see a definite impact in that expense going out. I think we looked at numbers, and it's one or two students that have never attended, or all of our students have, have never attended Whitman, Whitman-Hanson Regional Schools going out to charter except for one or two. And they make that conscious choice once they're here. But the, the availability for a parent to say, I'm going to go here for kindergarten at no cost, then they just stay. Because once you establish some roots in a school, you want to stay. And it's a K to 12. So, you know you're, what you're, what you're there for.
Only just because the cost is, or sped, sped just keeps going up.
The sped piece of it, and I think our charter school piece of it, I think we can keep them home. Sped pieces, certain things are, are way out of our control. I think if we can get a handle on sped transportation from the state, but that's non-reimbursable, we're, we have kids, and, and even the, the homeless designation of where we transport kids is a challenge. We have some students that are, are far away, and it's costing us $250 a day to transport them back and forth. We get certain reimbursements, but we don't get it all. But the goal is to keep our kids home, make sure that our audit district placements rein in a little bit. I did have a, a meeting, a roundtable meeting with area superintendents. Our sped costs are not outrageous compared to where they are. Our audit districts are pretty similar because our social, emotional aspects of some of our kids. Remember back when we cut our, our elementary counselors last year because of budget? One of our goals is to put them back in because that might also curtail some of our audit district placements. If we have a person who can have a conversation with a student, modify their behavior and make it acceptable in a classroom so it's not affecting the teacher and the other students, we might keep them home as well. Some students, we can't provide the services, we never will be. They need an audit replacement, and I firmly support that. But I think we, if we can put some structures, some, some stopgaps in place to make sure that we're not just sending kids out because of their, of their behaviors in there and, and we don't provide the service for them.
I mean, because it's a combination between that and then you got to pay for all the transportation.
Correct. It's the transportation piece that's outside a circuit breaker. And our circuit breaker costs don't cover, cover the costs either. As you saw in that handout last week, what circuit breaker is, just doesn't, doesn't match. And that number can fluctuate as well. And that's the piece Christine keeps reminding me about our revenues. We don't know where our revenues come in. We don't know where circuit breaker is going to come in with a percentage. We don't know transportation reimbursement with a percentage. We don't know Chapter 70. So, we're, we're throwing things out there, but the state could say, no, we're going to cut this back a little bit, cut this back a little bit. I keep hearing we have a very solid economy, and I'm getting cuts from the state. So, I'm not really sure. I'm still, and I made that joke to Josh Cutler, still waiting on that $1 billion surplus that I wanted to earmark for safety, security going forward. And I haven't seen that either. And that's no dig on Josh, but we, we, I saw a lot of that in November, and I haven't seen anything on our side from that.
As a follow-up, I did ask Senator Brady's office the other day, any information they could dig up and provide to us through DESC on the safety and security with the supplemental from '18. You know, we lost, regional transportation was supposed to go up for last, for last year, and they just decided to take $10 million out and do something else with it, let's just say.
Any other questions? Anybody in the gallery? Mr. Lyman, Mr. Bezanson, Mr. Kowalski? Chris?
Just generally speaking, I mean, I look at the state mandates, and a lot of these things, I think are the right things to do. We have to do these things regardless whether the state mandates them or not. But looking at some of them, I also... But looking at some of them, I also, just thinking out of the box, and Robbie's kind of mentioned this in the past as well. Are there any opportunities where we could push back and just simply say, well, we're not doing it? I mean, what are the, what would the, I mean, walk us through the compliance as to how that would go? Would the state finally just say, if you don't do it, we're not giving you any of your chapter 70 money?
I think one of the highlights that I think we can use is our new commissioner, Jeff Riley, who was the former superintendent of Lawrence. If you remember, a few years ago, we had what was called district-determined measures. And district-determined measures were like a very large, they were, let's see, homegrown MCAS tests in areas that we didn't, that states were not required to test. So a district-determined measure was for something that a district had to create, do all of this work, test their students, and then show the state. And the state had to approve what you did. So there was massive amounts of money that went into it. There was massive things that districts had to do. And in doing that, they then had to ask the state if that was okay. Totally fabricated by the state. Jeff Riley, our new commissioner, when he was the superintendent of Lawrence, said, "I refuse to do that. I just refuse." So what took place was, by his refusal, by other refusals, by then the MTA getting in, by other groups, the Superintendents Association, the School Committee Association, they all jumped on board, and that went away. But the only way that really works is by, one, superintendent, I'm not saying a superintendent in his first five months, but a superintendent would have to make that determination and then get the pockets that are out there of administrative groups and area groups to go back against it. That has happened on a number of occasions with, well, let me say this. What you have for educator evaluation today is not what you had for educator evaluation when it came to be because of some of that pushback. So there is pushback continually. It's that we don't see most of the mandates. Now, what also gets caught up is when we talk about the charters, when we talk about the special ed, when we talk about all these pieces, then the state gets into the equity issue. And the equity issue is something now that's being pushed on many different levels, as well as it should be. But that also then is the, it's difficult to then get involved in that on one local level. But there are people that are out there, and there are sources in education that are trying to push back. Some have been successful, some haven't been.
I mean, I understand the dire straits that we face. The districts, some of the towns, et cetera. But I look at $474,000 going out to charter schools, or a deficiency of $474,000 to this district for charter schools. And I have a hard time rationalizing how we can even contemplate any type of cuts or reductions of the services we provide, provide monies for something that we're required to do that absolutely have no benefit to the district.
And that's why, you know, when you see the city of Brockton really pushing back on a new charter school. You know, Plymouth just opened a new charter school. And it's a public school, state public school, but we're tuitioning students in, and they can accept or not accept our students. And to me, I can't deny any student that walks in our door. So as I'm part of growing my network of superintendents, that's a discussion. So we had, at that roundtable, Glenn Kuchar from MASC was there and talking about inequities. And that's going to be something that I'll talk to this committee about at, once we get through the process of litigation coming now. Equity is a big issue in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Make sure all of our services are equitable to all of our kids because equity is a term right now that's flying all over the Commonwealth. So I want to make sure our programs are all equitable so we don't open ourselves up to litigation moving forward. But that being, and I appreciate George saying that, I don't want to get out in front of something in my first five months that I don't want to back out to. But I'm willing to bring you as much information and provide you information around some of these unfunded mandates or underfunded mandates. Charter schools, my buzz. I don't really appreciate that. And I also, I love vocational education, but their per pupil expenditure isn't comparable to my per pupil expenditure. And I struggle with that as well. And programs that are vocational schools in the state are offering some of the kids that should stay home in their home district, but have the affordable or have the opportunities to go to vocational. So we're all pulling from the same pot, so to speak. But I absolutely understand what you're saying, Chris, and I'll look into this a little bit more and see what we can do and what we can push back. The positive, what George said about Jeff Riley, he's a fighter. And he's, he's a straight shooter. He'll tell you what he wants to do and what he doesn't want to do. So you're going to see some movement in DESI, and hopefully, the State Board of Education will work with him as well.
Fred?
You know, just getting into regional transportation. I got into it with Mr. Riley a little bit at a meeting. And supposedly turned him red, but we did talk afterwards, so I don't think he holds it against me. The Commonwealth looks at it that they want us to have quote-unquote "skin in the game." But yet, the mandate is that they shall fully fund regional transportation to every appropriation. So I don't understand that, and that's where I was going. And as I said to him, I said, "Then come up with a list of standards." Okay, we've cut our start times. We've done everything we can software-related to create the best bus routes to save as much money as possible on our bussing. They know they have a problem as far as the bidding process, and that you don't have enough people. But to come up with a different way of establishing what a district does and hold us to a different standard. Whether he listens or not, or whether there's anything you can do about it, I don't know. But it's one thing that's on the radar, at least of association of regional school districts that I'm involved with. Because as we all know, the regions are a little bit different. And that's one area, hopefully, that we can make some headway. Charter is another area that we're pushing at.
Okay, any other questions? Or anybody in the gallery? As you can see, we have some problems moving forward with what the budget is going to be. We haven't come up with a direct figure, but $5 million in the negative on unfunded mandates, it does present a problem. If they'd fund all of that, I think it would cure all of our ills.
That's not a problem.
We would have a couple of them.
Exactly. Okay, thank you. Thank you all. And Lisa, I didn't see you in the back. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Okay, continue your report.
Christine, little update on FY19 and the transfer, please.
In your handouts tonight is the year-to-date revenue report and the year-to-date budget report. The single pager is the revenue. First column, it shows what we're anticipating. The second column is any transfers in or adjustments. And those happened in July, when the governor's budget was certified. Then you have the revised budget. The year-to-date expended is actually what we've actually brought in so far in revenue. So if you look at the town's assessments, we received 50%. We expect a payment in February, and then another one in May. We actually did receive a payment, a transportation reimbursement payment in January, and we received a balance or close to that balance hopefully in June. Does anyone have any questions on the revenue piece? The year-to-date budget report. I feel like I'm a broken record, but if you look on page nine, the concern again is with the special education. You see that their transportation is running in the red. Their out-of-district placements is running in the red. Their contract for services is in the red. So still my concern there. And also, if you look a little bit further down, the McKinney-Vento Act, there are also over budget there as well. Other than that, it's status quo, but that's where my concern still is. Do you have any more questions?
Go to the transfer. Transfer?
So the transfer, it says transfer number one, January 16th. This is movement in personnel, and also that we ratified Unit A, C, and D. So this reflects the change out of that. It's moved out of the salary reserve that we placed when we, last year's budget before the collective bargaining agreements were ratified. There's no change to the bottom line. It's just moving money from one place to another.
Sorry, Christine, is there a handout on that?
Yes.
Sure is?
We don't have it. Yeah, I know what it's, no, sorry about the, nothing.
It's the last page. The transfer?
It looks like this.
She's going to make us.
Yeah, we just had the budget. Christine, while she's running that, one quick question, if that's all right?
Sure.
What is district-wide OTH-SCH?
Can you tell me what page that's on?
That was on page nine. Is that, it's a big one. It's a $3.5 million.
Oh, that's out of district placement.
Okay, that's what I thought it was. That's the out of district placement.
This is the short version.
No, it's fine. This one, OTH.
Other schools.
Right, the one that's already 100% of the, 132,000 dollars over budget.
Correct. Hence why the transportation's over, because we've got a district placement, we got to transport them now.
And I feel bad because Lauren keeps coming in with her head down, saying, you know, we got to, you know, I hate to tell you, but, and in certain situations. And I think, you know, it's our culture right now, it's how kids are. And we are, we have to prepare our programs to accommodate all learners. And that's where we're struggling right now. And our, just on the side, we're going to get up, but all our collaborative costs are going up next year as well.
No problem, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Much, thanks, Michelle.
So there's no change to the bottom line of the budget. It's just moving money now that those collective bargaining agreements have been ratified.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone have any questions about this transfer sheet you just received? It has a zero impact to the budget. There's no change in budget.
Motion to approve the transfer?
I'd entertain that motion.
Second.
Anyone have any questions? All those in favor of the transfers printed?
So much.
Thank you.
You will see, as we go forward, North River Collaborative. Every year, the school committee has to approve the annual report from North River Collaborative. I'm newly on the board of the collaborative. I enjoy working with our fellow partners in the area with collaborative. Steve Donovan is the executive director. I think he's doing a fine job over there. He's struggling with costs as well, and how to be as efficient in the collaborative in this role that he has. But here is, in your packet is the annual report for approval.
I'd entertain a motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? unanimous. Also, we have a school that would like to join North River Collaborative. It's Holbrook. And in order for them to join, it has to be approved by Abington, Avon, Bridgewater, Rianom, East Bridgewater, Hanover, Holbrook, Rockland, Stoughton, West Bridgewater, and Hanson, Whitman-Hanson, who are all members of the collaborative. I would entertain a motion to accept.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Fred?
And seeing that you're on the board, you can hopefully answer. There is no impact to us, other than they would be providing services at their class, or I'm sure, in their town.
Yeah, I mean, it's actually better to have more schools in the collaborative because there's more money coming in.
Right, so it'll defray some of the admin costs?
I wasn't on the board at that point when they accepted, the board of directors accepted them in in June, so.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Michelle, does this need to be signed somewhere?
There's one page for you to sign, yes. Say chairman.
The back page.
The very last.
Your last one.
Yeah, the Hanson chairperson or something. And then they, every school district signs it, then they send it into.
Yeah.
Right here, Michelle, one. Okay. Anything further, Jeff?
Just a reminder of charting the course on February 2nd for school committee members. It'll be right upstairs in the com room.
Do we need to sign up separately, or just show up?
I need to have attendance, so if you could let me know if you're coming.
Put me in.
Okay, anybody else? I know Mr. Strickland, Mr. Troy.
What's the time they get for that?
9:00 AM.
I had Michelle.
Actually, we reserved the library and the portrait cafe, so we can break down in here.
Okay.
I had Michelle make up and put in your packet in case anybody wanted to see a brief overview of what charting the course curriculum is going to be. Sort of maybe, some might call us a cheat sheet, but it is printed. So if anyone that is going or thinking of going wants to see what's going to be brought up, I've had Michelle put it in your packet so it would give you a little bit of a heads up on what the rules and responsibilities are. So if anybody's doing it or wants to brush up on it, you would have that opportunity by putting in your packet.
And we give you lunch. If that's an incentive.
Okay.
Thanks. And just an update on what's going on in district with facilities and some building issues that we have. Right before our last meeting in December, we get cited by the Mass Fire Services for the stack of the Whitman boiler. Ernie sent, and Christine sent, wrote over to Frank Lytton, which he approved. We had to fix the violation of the boiler stack. Cost was about 11,700. Got word today. There was a request for service in November for the Duval chairlift. The handicap chairlift in Duval for repair, it doesn't work. The vendor finally came out Monday to look at it and gave us an estimate that it's either going to be repaired or replaced. The replacement cost is between $35,000 and $45,000. And repairs could be a little bit over 10. He's coming out, he was supposed to be there today, or tomorrow, or Friday. Gave us that little window to look at that. Haven't submitted that to Whitman at all yet. Wanted to just give you folks an update first on that. But that chairlift was reported to us, and Ernie reported it to the vendor to come out and look at it back in November. They finally came out and looked at it. We need to have a chairlift in Duval. We do have students that cannot use stairs. So that's something that we need before we get a violation from another governing agency. We need to get that repaired. Earlier, or later in this fall, a parent actually emailed me about the lack of signage on Route 58 in front of the Indian Head School for a school zone. We have no signage on 58 saying, "Slow down, there's a school zone." Talked to Mike McHugh and Hanson DPW. They've earmarked $15,000 for solar signs so that now you'll know that when school's in session, it's this typical sign, slow down 20 miles an hour during the course of the school day. So those will be going up soon. Todd earmarked that yesterday for those signs. Also, if you walk into the Indian Head Gym, you're going to see some capital projects going on. The ceiling tiles are being repaired in the Indian Head Gym. Also, you're going to see a big, big fan. It's called the Big A Fan, actually from the company, the Big A Fan Company, which is there, which was approved a couple of years back, I believe, to circulate the air in the gym. You'll also see the same two fans in the Hanson Middle School gym. George turned it on, almost sucked them up.
Awesome, I got to say. Big womp, womp, womp.
It was pretty good. So those are some of the projects that we have. Oh, yeah, did I mention the ceiling tiles as well in Indian Head? The gym ceiling tiles are going up. So as you go around, since we haven't been meeting as frequently for facilities, I'll give you these updates as they come up. I will also provide you information. If we do have a capital project that's an emergency project, I will let you know. It's something that I didn't do for the stack at Whitman Middle. I'll do that in the future. I think that's important for you folks to know. And if you ever have any questions at all, give me a shout, give me a call. Say, "Look, I noticed something." I didn't notice anything on 58 by Indian Head until that parent brought it up. And lo and behold, we did. I didn't notice anything on, on fifty-eight by Indian Head, until that parent brought it up, and lo and behold, we did a look at, and said, "Yeah, we should have it, it's a school zone. There should be a slowdown area, we have it everywhere else in the district, we'll put it up there." And again, both towns have been very receptive to our capital issues, I know Whitman's having issues with capital, so I hate to say, "Hey, this is going on, and I'm hoping for a repair, I just don't have a, know what, what it is yet," and hoping, hoping the company can come up with a repair, at least a fix for now, until we can get through this budget cycle. That's all we have on, on, thanks.
On building improvements, there was discussion about what becomes a building improvement, or what becomes a capital project? That's why building improvements is on there? Fred?
I think that our facilities committee needs to meet more often. There seems to be projects going on that members of the committee are not aware of. We don't know what's happening, and therefore, you know, you lose a little bit of accountability, so to speak. I think we should probably look at our calendars and schedule the facilities.
You can schedule a facilities meeting before every school committee meeting, if it's deemed necessary, or we can just add it to every school committee meeting previous, and cancel it, if we, if we don't need it.
Yep. Just trying to think of what that other committee's doing, the budget, because they were sort of talking about meeting that hour before, but I don't think that's gonna be super convenient for them.
Speaking of that particular committee.
That's a Whitman committee.
It's a Whitman committee, and any of the Whitman members that are interested in going to that can go to that committee meeting. I know there's been some gray area, and we just kind of found out about it, because I'm not on the list, Jeff wasn't on the list, Bob wasn't on the list.
Nobody was.
I don't think you were on the list, it was kind of like.
Found out when I walked through the door, there was a meeting.
Right, so there is a budget team, I guess it's?
Well, I think it's a committee that's appointed by the town of Whitman. The only reason I'm on it is, I asked to be on it.
Is it like a rep?
Now, I thought Jeff and Christine.
So let me, let me clarify, I was invited to a meeting in October by Mr. Lambiace. I was on the email to meet, as far as how Whitman was going to structure a budget planning meeting, not budget meeting, so to speak, but rolling it out. We met twice, we met once in October, I believe, once in November, at the Whitman Town Hall. This meeting I found out about was this morning, for tonight, I was on, zero. Mr. Lyman didn't send out an email late this afternoon, or, or early this afternoon, saying that there is a meeting tonight at six o'clock. So I showed up for that meeting.
Michelle, would it be prudent to you send Mr. Lyman, or Mr. Lambiace, whoever's doing this committee, to please notify the Whitman members? So that they can be available, if they'd like to attend that meeting, I only think that's prudent. I don't think I'm overstepping, and that way he can say yea or nay, but at least everybody will be in the loop, does that make sense?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I, I wasn't at the meeting, I wasn't on the list, which is great. But.
Don't say that too quick.
Is this a, is this a decision-making body that would have impact at, anywhere?
No.
No.
It's on the timing and the process of the budget, the budget process for the town of Whitman.
For everybody, the whole?
The whole town, for all departments.
Basically try to set up the guidelines that are lacking in the town.
Okay.
That the school has.
Wouldn't that be under the purview of the Whitman Finance Committee anyways?
No.
Well, Lambiace is the chair of this, it was his thought process and idea. I believe he was the appointing person for the town, as far as, you know, who was on the committee and not on the committee, as far as that went. And when they were forming it, they had, you know, mentioned something about someone from the schools, or this, or that. I did express my interest in, yep, sure Fred, no problem.
I sent an email in to them, saying I wanted to go on, and never got a reply back.
I also, and perhaps it got lost in translation when we spoke last Wednesday morning. I know I mentioned that they had talked about doing it, it wasn't set in stone. I didn't get an email, I saw the little alert pop up, you know, from the town hall, saying that the meeting was scheduled, and actually, it was originally scheduled for the town hall, so I called to get clarification on that, and they amended it, and.
Yeah, I, I wasn't part of that, I know we had talked about potentially having something, but when no email came out from Mr. Lambiace, I didn't know what was happening, I don't check the Whitman Town website to see what's going on in the town of Whitman.
Bob?
Yeah, I was at the initial meeting, they sent around emails and so forth, and I was never really notified until I found out tonight that there was one, I spoke to Mr. Lyman, and told him to make sure he puts me on the email list, if there's another meeting, but. So I went to one, and I guess I missed one or two.
Okay, Bob?
Yes, sure.
So can we, so can we just make sure there's clarity as to the purpose of the meeting? So if it's a budget planning meeting for the town of Whitman, fantastic, wonderful. I think there just needs to be clarity as to what is the scope pertaining to the school's role in that meeting, and the governance associated with that. Right, so is it, is it a representation?
Agreed.
From the schools, or is it a planning meeting or not, because I think that's where there's clarity, because somebody asked about decisioning and delegation, certainly something's gonna come up, someone's gonna ask a question, so. Maybe just clarity as to what the purpose is.
I think, the first meeting I went to, my understanding was that it was a procedure as to when they would like to see budgets presented. But there was never a discussion as to what your actual budget was going to be, that, as far as I know, that committee has no way in which to accept, or suggest what budget should be, it's primarily, I think they're trying to get dates like October first, December first, November something. But as far as individual budget was concerned, no, talking about maybe what the financial situation is in the towns, and a possible override as a solution, so on and so forth, but I don't think there's any indication that committee is going to control what the budget will be.
Well, they'd be, again, usurping a.
Right.
And, you know, go back to Mr. Colletti, the abrupt nose, I have a history with Mr. Colletti and the abrupt nose, and that's not really an answer, I mean, I, I need an understanding, because.
It's not just FinCon that's there, they're trying to get a guideline of how to get the, instead of just walking up there in February, is there a way of rolling everything back to if they had it their way, July, but that's impossible.
Can we get, get some clarification from the Whitman Selectmen and Mr. Lyman? What's going on?
I think we're, we're not, we're getting off of the topic that we don't even have on the agenda.
We haven't communicated anything either.
Right, I was giving us a little latitude, we're getting into a big discussion about something that's off agenda. I think we should leave it at this, and we'll put it on the next agenda. Michelle, please notify Mr. Lyman, and see if we can get some clarification, then we can come back to the committee and see exactly what's going on, because nobody, let's make this clear, nobody's accusing anybody of doing anything wrong. This is all done within the realm of trying to get some dollars.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to be clear on that, nobody's saying anything's wrong, let's get some clarity and move forward.
And, just, and I just want, this committee's not about dollars, it's about procedure.
Yeah.
That's developing procedure, developing.
Yeah.
You know, they're gonna, they want to develop a capital plan for the town, you know, in writing similar to our capital matrix, and when they're looking for information, and establishing a timeline, that's what the purpose of that committee is.
Okay. Let's see if you can get some more clarity, Michelle, and we'll bring it back to the committee at the budget meeting. Okay. Everybody good? Any questions for Jeff?
No, thank you.
No one? Okay, vendor contract extensions, we had discussed this, and Christine has spoken to it, we sent her.
Yeah, at the last school committee meeting, you asked, you requested me to ask S J Services and First Student if they would reconsider their increases. And both of them said no, because they're in the same boat as us, they have health insurance, and they have collective bargaining agreements that they have to pay their employees, so. For First Student, it would be two, three and a half percent for two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one would be two and a half percent. S J Services in year two thousand twenty is three percent, and in two thousand twenty-one is two percent. I believe you got this memo in your packet. Dollar amounts.
So, I'm looking for a motion to extend the contract with S J Services?
So moved.
How, how long is the extension?
Two years, and then we put it out to bid again. Same with transportation. Two-year extension.
It's a two-year extension? I'm gonna get into it in a minute. Um, S J Services. I have a motion in the second.
Second.
I have a motion in the second.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Discussion, Fred?
With S J Services, are those increases consistent with their costs on the state bid list?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce, did you have a question?
No, I didn't.
Chris?
Do we have, so do we have to do the two-year extension, or can we just do one, or what are our options, if any? Is it just the basically the way the contract?
Uh, two years, because that's, the original contract was for three, with the, with the option to extend two years.
When do we have to do that by?
Sooner than later.
But, I mean, what date do we have to give them an answer?
Well, First Student, I would say that you, we need to tell them now, the contract, I think, says sixty days. But Abington, who we're in cooperative, we're in the cooperative transportation contract with, they already voted this, they voted in September. And S J Services is, I think, believe is sixty days.
Sixty days from the end of the contract?
Yes, be prior to the end of the contract.
Prior to the end of the contract, which ends July first, or June thirtieth?
Any further discussions? Okay, so we're gonna do S J first. I'd entertain a motion, and I have a motion in the second to continue a vendor contract extension with S J Services custodian for two years. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. Okay, the next extension is First Student Transportation, and that extension is also two years, Christine?
Correct.
I'd entertain a motion to extend First Student's contract for two years.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Fred?
Okay, again, we need to notify by June thirtieth?
No, by April thirtieth.
By April thirtieth?
But if you, if you vote this tonight, I can let them know now, so they can plan.
And, is there any option to do one and one? You know, or is it?
The original bid spec said was for three years with a two-year option, so it's all or nothing.
And Abington's already voted two years.
Abington voted in September, correct.
Because as anybody knowing what does Abington make a difference, well, we partnered up with Abington to get a bit of interest, right?
Right.
And Abington's already voted it.
Correct.
For the two-year extension. Chris?
So how does this line up with what you were talking about earlier in regards to transportation, so would we just?
I haven't even started to look at.
So this would line up?
Yeah, I mean, you're talking a two-year implementation of that anyway.
Anyone else? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? unanimous, okay.
Thank you.
Stay right there, Christine. As you know, we've been leasing a piece of equipment, and leasing a piece of equipment, or owning a piece of equipment, are two different things. And we have been leasing it for quite some time, so we had brought this to the committee previously, and Christine, there was some questions. I know there was a question about keeping the insurance in-house with our insurance agent.
Right.
And you had a savings on that.
Yeah, the insurance through our own agency, agent would be two hundred and fifty dollars a year versus twelve hundred dollars here, through, through CAT, the state bid list. The other question, I believe, was, you asked me about the service agreements, I think you have this on your, you should have, it should have been in your packet, I believe.
The three, four, and five-year options?
Yes, the three, four, and five-year options. Pretty self-explanatory, so the first year we wouldn't, um, first two years we wouldn't have, first year we wouldn't have any, because it's under warranty, and year three, four, and five, that's the cost. So if we did it for two, two years, three years, it would be twenty-nine hundred dollars, if we did it for four years, it would be forty-three hundred, and if you did five years of service, it would be six thousand ninety-six dollars.
Okay, so, but are we talking warranty, or are we talking, we're talking maintenance agreement?
This is, this is exactly what the gentleman emailed me, it said, "The visits are between each year, since you're getting a brand-new machine to start, and will not need service until year one is over. Each visit gets five hundred hours of service, which includes filters and fluid changes, for the owner's manual, as well as numerous other inspections."
Okay, and what, it's not warranty, it's just service, how many hours do we use the machine on an annual basis, do you know?
I'd have to ask, that's a good question, I'd have to ask Ernie that.
I mean, determining how many services we purchase, I would think we'd want to know, you know, how much use we are giving the machine, if we're using a thousand, you know, a thousand hours a, a year. And I don't know how those things work, you know, is it just runtime, they leave it idling?
Strictly runtime, Fred, it's got an hour meter, it doesn't have a speed, it doesn't have a mileage meter, it's got an hour meter, when it's running, the meter's going. You run it five hundred, if it's idling five hundred hours, that's when it would get its service. That's something I think we can ask Ernie, but that's something that we could vote at a later date.
That's correct, you don't have to vote.
The question is.
You don't have to vote the service contracts right now. It was just, that was the question to ask.
How much was the lease again? Currently leased?
Uh, the lease is, I said eighteen thousand the last time, but during the winter months, it increases a little bit, so it's actually twenty-two thousand five hundred that we're rent, that we're renting, and then the lease payments would be twenty-one thousand seven thirty-five for five years.
All right, so how much do we spend annually to lease the machine, because we leased the current machine for twelve months?
Yeah, we rented twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Annually?
Per year.
Annually.
Okay, and to purchase it?
Twenty-one thousand seven thirty-five.
Plus the cost of maintenance?
Yeah, and we'll own it in five years.
And two fifty a year in insurance?
Right.
Yes.
I think it's a no-brainer that we.
Yeah, it makes, it makes sense to own the machine.
And this is?
In a certain amount of years, how long is the payment?
Five years.
Five years, so in five years, you're gonna own a machine, that's gonna last twenty-five years.
The last number, like Christine said, and I thought it was like eighteen, that's why I wasn't adding up.
Right, well, I just, Ernie informed me that, I think it's December, January, February, and March, the rental rate goes up for those four months.
Can we try and negotiate the interest rate a little bit?
I can try, but this is right off.
Get better perspective.
This is right off the state bid list, so I don't know how much room there is.
Five three five?
So.
I can get three percent money right now.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion to accept buying this piece of equipment over leasing it.
So moved.
Second.
One more piece of discussion?
Discussion, go ahead.
The current lease that we're in, or the rental agreement that we're in, are there any payment, prepayment penalties, or termination fees?
I think it's month-to-month.
Okay.
And this is, this, probably this machine might take three, three months or so to come in, so it might work out perfectly, it's not like we're gonna get it for the winter months.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not obligated to pay till June thirtieth, say.
No, we don't have a contract, it's on a.
And then we're paying for two machines for a while.
It's on a month-to-month basis, we don't have an actual contract with them, we just encumber the money at the beginning of the year, knowing that we're gonna be paying for the rental on that machine.
Any other discussions? All those in favor? unanimous, thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Jeff, safety and security initiatives?
Yes, so back in November, I presented to the committee tentative Alice, information in packet, PowerPoint that Kevin Harrington and Billy Fraser put together. The elementary principals went over it, and kind of rewrote some aspects, not the safety aspects, but the user-friendly piece for elementary kids. So you will, you have this PowerPoint that we'd like to present moving forward to our elementary students and our parents, and we'll start those conversations into January, middle of February, ongoing, building to building, so kids will have an idea of what Alice is in the elementaries, with the potential of, you know, purchasing some literature for them to read in class. Don't be afraid, be, be prepared, don't be scared, some, those are the types of books that the Alice Foundation, Alice Company is suggesting. But this is the initial piece, and I want to show this to parents, so that parents have an idea of what's going on before kids get it in class. Truly, the bottom line is pay attention, do what your teacher says, that's the overall piece of this whole presentation. And not to be afraid of the police, not to be afraid of the. And not to be afraid of the police, not to be afraid of, of, when something goes on. I think it's a really good explanation, being an Alice trainer myself, for elementary school students to be prepared for something that we don't wanna think about, but to have that conversation so that they have an idea that not every time that we say stay put or shelter in place, that there's an armed intruder. But using the common language and then showcasing it for our parents.
Is it possible to get it put on our website?
We can do, I wanna get it out to parents. I wanted you folks to know first, and then we'll, we'll use social media, we'll put it all out as we go. But I want parents to have an opportunity. What I'm concerned about is blasting it out there without an opportunity for explanation, and then the Facebook world takes a comment. So as we do that, we will roll everything out on our social media and on our website as we move forward.
I, I think one thing we have to look at is what is the security aspect of letting the PowerPoint go out on social media as to if there are steps involved, you know? You know, but the overall general consensus, I think, would be, you know, yes, obviously.
Anyone else?
Will you be having another, like a follow-up meeting to the one we had, like was it last year?
Last, last, April, May, another safety, security as we go forward. And I think that's for, for six through twelve, just common language. Cause again, the, the, the thing that folks wanna know is, what does that mean when you go into stay put? What does that mean? Did something happen? We wanna get the elementary piece out because that was never formalized and now we can have another conversation.
Cause I remember parents wanting to, you know, after him says, Noel Haft wants it to be implemented.
We have a good process in place. Um, nothing's perfect. We have a good process in place to make sure our kids are, are safe and secure to the best of our abilities. And again, the relationships with our police and fire on both sides, I think, are outstanding. I can't give them enough kudos credit for their, their people and their response to us anytime we need it. Fire drills, anything that happens, they're courteous, they're professional, and they work really well with all of our staff, so I appreciate them.
And I think if you remember back to our first meeting of the year, one of our PD pieces for the whole staff was for training in Alice via the online component, which is the first piece. So we have a three-year relationship with the Alice Company, so that each year our teachers can move through and receive different certifications and different aspects of safety for their classroom that are designed for them. So this is another outgrowth of that to let the community know.
Okay. Christine? Articles, warrant articles?
The warrant articles?
I don't think you're in the pack.
Bob, do you have?
I don't have any.
What are they?
Warrant articles?
No, we only have the warrant subcommittee things. That's, that's it.
Oh. That's warrant subcommittee.
I didn't see it.
That's, that's all.
It wasn't in the packet that was emailed.
Wanna bounce Bob while we get that? George can do that.
No.
George can do the health survey.
Do you want copies or do you want me to read them to you? These are placeholders.
They're placeholders for the Whitman Town warrant. They've asked that we put placeholders in by January twenty-fifth, and I know we're not meeting again until February sixth. So these are just placeholders, estimates, what, they came right off the matrix of what we want for, be placed on for next year, this year. There's been no discussion with their, haven't had any, a capital meeting with them. So it's just to pu- put a placeholder on the warrant.
Cause they're gonna close the warrant pretty quickly.
Right.
It's only open for a few weeks.
Right, by the twenty-fifth, they need it by the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, who's it, the twenty-sixth, they close it?
The next time we meet, we will be already the war...
And then the special, we'll have a little more time with the special, so.
Okay, we can move by that, well, for the sake of time, academic calendar, Jeff?
Sure. So, um, I just wanted to bring up the academic calendar for next year. We're not voting on it today, but this is one of the years that we can potentially extend Christmas break, or winter break for us. Twenty-third is a Monday. I don't think we're gonna bring kids in on a Monday, the twenty-third, prior to Christmas. And New Year's Day is on a Wednesday, so I'm looking at a potential break from school ending on December twentieth and students coming back on January sixth, which is a full two weeks. Just wanted to put it out there because that might have an impact on snow, whatever. We're looking at a tentative date of starting school for teachers on August twenty-sixth, kids on the twenty-eighth, with an end date with that vacation of two weeks of being June sixteenth, without snow. We do have a, another piece of this calendar, just for your information, there's no major election in November next year, but there is a primary election in March of two thousand and twenty. And I believe the town of Hanson has asked us to have a new school day for that. So we're putting that on the calendar as a temporary, but I just wanted the committee to kinda think about that potential of not opening the school for the Thursday and Friday after New Year's. Be an extended break. If we end up having some snow, that might be a potential issue as we go forward. But as we look forward to this, I di- I just wanted, before we got into, hey, here's the calendar, vote on the calendar, I just wanted you to think about the fact that we have a potential, this doesn't happen all the time. But, um, keeping the schools closed for two solid weeks, potentially could save on, on heat, on just letting people know, and as soon as we can get this out, actually plan a vacation during that timeframe, um, and go after Christmas and still have a full seven or eight days before school starts again. So it's just something I wanted to, to have you think about, um, before we come to March and say, this is the calendar, and bam, here we go. To actually talk to the principals a little bit about how they feel and getting a little flavor from the staff, because it is a long break and we are gonna extend into June. And if we have two or three snow days, we could be potentially into the, the twenty-second or twenty-third of June, something that we haven't been in, in a while, because we do start so early.
I think you also, uh, this, um, this has happened two other times since I've been here where, where the holiday has been on a Wednesday. And both those times we did shut down. Uh, we, at one point anticipated, you know, putting the heat down lower, so we'd get some savings in costs and shutting the schools down, except for the high school due to its structure. And we did that and it worked out well. Another time, uh, it didn't work out so well because community groups came in. So Jeff and I have already talked that if this is done, we would have to send out those memos to the community groups that usually use the Saturday or the Sunday at schools to at least make sure that they're shut down for the second week, which is usually the one that sometimes they're open for, so you can get some of those cost savings by lowered heat and things of that nature.
Just wanna point out that when we did do that, uh, there was a side letter of memorandum that there wouldn't be any school on the twenty-third, uh, at that time, if I'm not mistaken. So...
And, and...
And that's been, and that's been eliminated out of unit A's contract.
Correct. I, I look at that piece of, on the twenty-third, opening the buildings for one day would be a challenge. So I, I mean, I look at that one, I'm looking at the other side of, of, of the aspect, of, of the calendar. But what I really just wanted the committee to know is, we're looking already at that, and I don't want you to be stuck with a decision in, in March, and I want you to, you know, think about where we're going and, and, and give direction to, to what we need to do.
Also with that, I've been contacted from, uh, the Hanson Tom Clerk, can I read it to you, dear Mr. Hayes, I'd like to give you the date for the known state election that will take place during the upcoming school year of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, so that the school committee could take into consideration not having school on that date, which is the presidential primary election, Tuesday, March third, two thousand twenty, the hours of the seven AM to eight PM. It would be greatly appreciated if you and the committee could make this happen. She would also like us to vote to close school on Tuesday, March third. So while we're not going to vote on the calendar this evening, I want you to just keep that in your mind. And also, Michelle, remind me as we get closer and we start to vote on the calendar, make sure we don't forget this. Okay?
I have it earmarked too, Bob, as well.
On me?
I have it earmarked.
It's on the calendar that you...
As long as we're good.
Yep.
I'm good with it. I don't wanna get the town clerk...
Understood, absolutely understood.
Okay, back to, um, the warrant articles, article S one. See if the town votes to raise and appropriate forty-five thousand to install thumbpiece latch in all interior classroom and office doors of Whitman Middle, Conley, and Duval Elementary. Article S two. See if the town, you wanna do them one at a time, you wanna do them...
Bob, is there a, is there a Hanson one?
No, cause, no, because this is just, Whitman needs us now.
Whitman opens and closes them.
Yeah, so we didn't put Hanson on for, for discussion at this point.
You wanna do them one at a time or you wanna do them with the ball?
Do them all.
Okay, to see if the town votes to raise an appropriate twenty-five hundred, twenty-five thousand to replace exterior doors as follows, two at Whitman Middle, three at Conley, and two at Duval. Article S three, to see if the town votes to raise an appropriate fourteen thousand, motorized physical education, for educational purposes to increase class size. Proposed by the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee, obviously.
Mr. Chairman? You know, you know what I'm gonna ask. Is it, do we have to read all these or can we accept them as written?
We can accept them as written.
Cause as long as the money's up there, because you could always come down or you always can take them off, you just can't add...
Right.
Like make a motion to accept as written.
Oh yeah, there are a ton of them. I entertain a motion to accept as written. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? These are placeholder only. We can withdraw any of these. At town meeting for us. Discussion?
Can we add something for, uh, the Duval lift? I know we don't have a dollar amount. Can, can we add it with a sum of money or do we have to have the sum in there?
You can...
We put that on the special.
Okay. They have money?
I think they have money, but when it's an emergency, um, project that needs to be done, we call Frank and he talks to voices.
I'm just saying, cause this is the only time we're meeting, do we wanna have a placeholder on this?
Well, we'll have time with the special.
As well. Okay.
And also the dollar amount Fred, if you were going to do that, you would put a bigger amount to make sure you cover it and then amend it at town meeting to the exact amount that you need when you got the estimate. Answer that question? Any further discussion on the motion to accept as presented in the document?
That's just placeholder.
All those in favor? unanimous? Thanks. Assistant Superintendent, Mass Youth Health Survey.
Yeah, this is, uh, it seems to be that, uh, Whitman Middle School has once again been chosen to participate in this random, um, voluntary survey that seems to be pretty much twelve out of the last fifteen years that Whitman Middle School's been chosen. Basically, it's, it's put out by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Office of Health and Human Services. What takes place is the school gets notified. Once they're notified, what you see is a fact sheet that'll go home. Um, what you see is, is the parent permission slip, should they opt out and not want their child to do it. It's completely voluntary. It's approximately fifty kids that are chosen, or two classes, um, during that class period, um, that one class period, they will take it. And then all the results are anonymous, and then you get the aggregate scores back. Uh, this has been something that's taken place in the district many, many times. And then, um, you move on it from there. Uh, the best thing I do in your, if you have questions in your sheet, um, is the fact sheet goes from alcohol, tobacco, goes a little bit into relationships. And, um, that's where, we always seem to be asked in the random selection. There's a hundred and sixteen schools that were chosen in Massachusetts, and Whitman Middle School was chosen once again.
I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? So just a, parents can opt out, correct?
Parents can opt out by filling in the paperwork and it's in, it's, uh, bilingual, if not trilingual, as needed.
Just a quick question. I know some of the questions it says may be sensitive. Do, do you or any other administrator have a chance to review it in advance of it going to the...
Uh, what we review, what they sent, no, what they send to the school is the, um, past, is a copy of the year before's questions. So if you feel sensitive or if you think someone doesn't wanna do it. But because it is voluntary for child, even starts and doesn't wanna finish, they have the ability to skip or opt out and walk out, and there's no, there's nothing that says they have to.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, don't have any donations tonight. Nothing is declared surplus either. There is a field trip request, student council on March sixth to March eighth. Eighth will be going to Hyannis for their annual state conference, approximately ten students, two chaperones, which are the class advisors, I believe, Moriadi, Dan Moriadi and Tracy Scott. They will not need a school nurse because one is provided, uh, at Hy- in Hyannis, in case there is a problem. I entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? unanimous? Thank you. Subcommittee reports warrant, subcommittee, I've got a couple of them. The first one is, um, dated December twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? The next warrant is dated January third, two thousand nineteen. I entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? unanimous? Great. Policy subcommittee? Nothing?
Didn't that note?
Facilities and capital improvement, as we discussed, they, you're gonna get a meeting going?
Yeah, uh, you, we're gonna post before every school committee meeting. Uh, that sounds like a good idea.
And if you don't need it?
If we don't need it, we'll...
We can move on.
Let Michelle know prior. Uh, I'm just thinking, we're not gonna do it on the budget meeting night, which is February.
Yeah, that's fine.
The end of the month, end of February, I think it was the twenty-seventh.
Okay, legislative update?
Pretty much stagnant, people getting assignments and whatnot. Uh, there still is interest. Uh, I did have a very long, uh, healthy conversation with Senator Brady, uh, the other night. And asked him if I was crazy to try and push and see if they could do something on a percentage increase on chapter seventy funding as opposed to a per pupil. If we were to get a minimum of three percent as opposed to a minimum of fifty dollars per student, it would be substantially more dollars. I have his permission to quote him, and that is, he's seen the craziest ideas move through quickly and get through, so don't think it's that crazy. You know, let's have further conversation and who knows what can happen. I floated that to a few other people in some other school districts, and the consensus is to, perhaps we can try and push the legislature for that. So that's something that I guess I'll be working on to try and see if we can make that happen. Other than that, it's pretty quiet. Still waiting for the supplemental eighteen and also the nineteen, uh, information for safety and security, school resource officers, et cetera. Now, if you've heard anything Christine, I don't, nobody seems to know a word.
Michelle, to, to tailor on that, could you, um, send a letter to State Representative Sullivan and see if she would come to a budget meeting? Okay. Cause I haven't seen her yet, and I think we've invited her. I'd like to have her come meet us. We could tell her our problems.
Yeah, well, actually, when we invited, the last meeting she was invited to, she was actually in training, uh, up in Amherst, so she just, physically couldn't make it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, um, Fred, do you think it would be, um, helpful if when you happened to go to those meetings, that you might have some type of letter endorsing that from the entire school committee?
I think that they're really on board to help us. I don't know that we need that letter. You know, I think that once things get going and inching up into the budget season, then yeah, a letter that we could send to all state representatives and all state senators.
But do you think that we need to be informed as you go along, so we know what's, what you are presenting?
Oh, I'll keep you informed as to what I'm doing.
Sometimes I just think that, um, you know, is a, some type, I don't know, I wouldn't say legal, but some type of endorsement from the entire committee, whether it's on a piece of paper, they see ten names, um, that might push things a little bit longer too, as some people may thinking it's an individual. I don't know, I'm just thinking aloud here.
Yeah, no, and, obviously, the strength of the committee, you know, is far stronger than just one person. The reception that I've received so far, until something could be perhaps a little bit more formal, uh, I think that might almost be overpowering, so to speak.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, it gives you, it shows them that you have the backing of all of us. What can it hurt?
I mean, if we, if we wanna author a letter to our state senator, three reps, uh...
We've done that in the past, that's why...
Yeah, uh, you know, stating that if you guys think it's a good idea, that instead of a minimum per pupil increase, you know, phenomenal amount of between twenty and fifty-five dollars, there was something tied to really the cost of the, uh, increase of our budget. More of a three percent minimum, you know, is the whole harmless. The other scary part is, and there was a whisper, that there may, may be some traction from the... from the governor's office, which hopefully wouldn't go too far, to get rid of the hold harmless, which could really, really hurt us with Chapter 70 funding.
I'm just thinking if there's individuals, let's say there's one person from the Edmonton, one person from East Bridgewater, and you from Whitman, if they, if those, if three of those committees sent in a letter individually saying, you know, these are our, these are our concerns, I don't know if that'd push things along more, but I, I just feel as though that sometimes, if there's more numbers, and they see more names saying, oh, you know, that's, that's just my thought.
Yeah, and.
An entertaining motion to do that?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be, I'd welcome something of that nature.
You making the motion, Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Second.
Further discussion?
Who was the motion?
That we're gonna.
Michelle's gonna ask it anyways.
That we're gonna send, Michelle knows, we're gonna send a letter signed by all of us, saying we support the, the change from per pupil to possibly a.
A 3%, a 3% minimum increase. Percentage increase such as 3% as a minimum increase in Chapter 70 funding.
Yeah, whatever the language is.
We're in discussion, go ahead.
Yes, as part of this, the State of the State address by the governor's coming up, I don't know if it's next week, whatever, but I know it's been put out there somewhere about looking at the formula.
Yes.
We might see it in, in, in his State of the State address, and please look it up, I, I just don't know the date. Last night was the State of the City for Boston, doesn't affect us really, but indirectly, there's, there's a great partnership, I think, with the governor and with the city of our capital, of our, of the capital of our Commonwealth. So they're actually going to be doing something going down to Washington. I'll support them in whatever they're doing there, but anyways, it'd be good to hear what they have to say. Plus, Fred, don't forget to mention that group that runs that website, not website, the Facebook page, Nerissa Walton, or.
Support our regional.
She's a very good advocate, the supporting of, of the regional school districts.
Actually, brings me to a very good point. There's a group out there, FOF, Fund Our Futures, which is backed by the MTA, and they're pushing from the Foundation Review Committee, the results of that study.
Right.
Those results do not favor regional school districts. They're showing that result with the tweak, if it happened, on chat, on only charter school reimbursement, and after a five-year period, we would see approximately a $919,000 increase. But they say, we don't know the numbers, because the numbers are always moving. And that was put out by Mass Budget. The prior spreadsheet that I had seen showed Whitman-Hanson getting a zero increase. Senator Chang Diaz has put in the numbers, or turned in the numbers for FY '20. Nobody has seen them, so we don't, have no idea what the actual numbers are. There is a push through Senator Tar to have a regional school district review committee, in taking the problems and the challenges that are unique to regional schools, and separating them from a regular school district. That's one area that I wanna try and push, you know, cause it's all well and good, I think Hull just passed a resolution, you know, to try and obtain better funding. I think someone mentioned to me it would add about 23,000 over five years to their budget. It really wouldn't have any impact, and they were confused as to why they actually did it, but I don't wanna get into another school's business, but the difference for a regional, you know, is far different. And, you know, I think if we can concentrate on that and try and get them to look at us, you know, our big problem's regional school transportation, you know, to get that fully funded, you know, that would mean, you know, two, 300,000 annually additional, something like that, you know, so good chunks of change.
All right. I have a motion, a second to send a letter, that we're all going to support it and sign it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, okay. Pilgrim Area Collaborative?
So I reported to you in December, on a December meeting for the Pilgrim Area Collaborative. At the time when we, before we adjourned our meeting, we were deciding whether we should have our January meeting, because it's January 3rd, speaking of dates close to New Year's, and if we would have a lot of business. We took care of a lot of business on behalf of the collaborative in December, so we did end up canceling January's meeting.
Okay. Negotiation, subcommittee, I believe we're all done with negotiations finally, so the subcommittee is done. I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Executive.
We don't need an executive session.
It's on litigation.
Oh. Okay. I'll take that motion and second back, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. An entertaining motion to an executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
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 Fred?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 When we come out of executive session, the only, the only motion I'm gonna be taking is to adjourn, we'll be taking no votes.